Good evening. My name is John DeLuca, Director of Water and Sewer for the city of Somerville. Tonight, we have an informational session in a public hearing for fiscal 2021 water rate increases. Next slide. Tonight's agenda is 6:00 to 6:30, we will give a presentation. At 6:30, we have a public hearing, accepting public testimony for the record. Please send a chat with your name, address to testify. Please keep in mind that public testimony are actual statements. We can't answer questions during public testimony, whether you're for or against the proposed rate increases, and we consider all testimony. Following the hearing, we will have an additional question and answer offered. Should we finish the presentation before 6:30? We can then open up to some questions, should people have them, and we will need to close the public, we will need to close the questions and answers at 6:30 exactly for the public hearing. Next slide. Water and Sewer Services Supporting Your Infrastructure. In partnership with the MWRA, we provide clean water to your home and business, sanitary sewer services for over 80,000 residents, and sufficient water pressure and volume for firefighting. Next slide. Water is a not-for-profit service. Rate adjustments are devoted to supporting your water and sewer infrastructure. Without sufficient revenue, we cannot maintain service, make needed repairs, fund water and sewer infrastructure replacements, and improvements. Next. So the majority of the water and sewer expenses goes to the MWRA. So annually, the total income for the water department, 55% of that annual revenue received goes directly to the MWRA for the cost of the water we receive for the city. And for the sewer, the annual income that's taken in, 65% of that cost goes directly back to the MWRA to treat the water, the sewage, the drainage water that we send them through our system. Next slide. Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds, separate from the city's general fund. So water and sewer services are a core function of the city's government. Let's take a little look and see where the water and sewer annual money goes. So we just talked about the MWRA fees, I don't know how much they receive. We also have operational costs, which cover administrative costs, overhead building, staffing, vehicles, vehicle repairs, everything we need to function during the day. We also have ongoing maintenance and repairs. We conduct valve, we conduct flushing, valve exercising, valve replacement, system repairs for the water and the sewer, and we also maintain the city's water meters. We also with that have a meter reading system that we also have to maintain in order to properly bill everyone. Then we have infrastructure improvements, and that also goes to design improvements on the water and sewers and drainage systems, and also includes regulatory compliance. Next slide. Your city's infrastructure and assets include 125 miles of water main. We have over 128 miles of sewer, 29,000 water and sewer connections, over 4,000 manholes, and over 1,600 fire hydrants throughout the city. Next. So our piping system, so 90% of our pipes are over 50 years old, and 70% are older than 100 years. So we can look at the top graph. It's the water line, water line pipe segments that were built. So a segment of a water main would be from one main gate valve to a second main gate valve on the same pipe. Those can be anywhere between 200 feet apart or 1,000 feet apart. So we know we have 17 of those segments, but that were built between 1800s and 1880s. We have 1,931 of those segments built between the 1880s and then in the 1900s. 844 segments built between the 1900s and the 1920s. We have quite a bit of our system that has far exceeded its useful life. We definitely need to keep our capital construction program strong and alive. We need to maintain the system. So a lot of these fees for the assessments will go to the capital construction group that can maintain the overall system and do replacements within that system. Average lifespan for a water main is 50 to 100 years old. We've well exceeded those 100 years. So we definitely need to maintain our system so we'll have a strong infrastructure in the future. Looking at the bottom section, which is the sewer and drain pipes segments, these segments are from one manhole to another on the same main pipe. So we know we've got 502 of those segments between 1860 and 1880. 1,305 between 1880, 1900, and 694 between 1900 and 1920. So, you know, segments of pipe usually are more than 500 feet apart, but again, still a very, very old system that needs attention. So we definitely need to increase the rates in order to support construction. Next slide. Tuberculated water mains. I think we've all seen these before. These are from pipes within our system. Tuberculation is mineral buildup deposits over time inside the water main, and it reduces the inside diameter of the pipe. It natively impacts water volume and fire flow. So these are some of the reasons why these older water mains definitely need to be replaced. In some instances, we can, we can clean and line them, but it just depends on the pipe itself and the material. If it's, has not deteriorated or corroded, we can then do that process. But we definitely need to pay more attention within the city. We have recently done a, an analysis of the water system, and we've come up with several areas that definitely need attention. Next slide. Cost drivers for the FY21 rate recommendation are changes to the MWRA fees, continued efforts to address critical and longstanding infrastructure needs, administrative consent order from the EPA and DEP, and we have leveled funded the operation of budget once again. On our assessment charge projected for the FY21 sewer did decrease by 3.8%. And our assessment projected for the water increased by 5.7%. So we definitely need to pay those additional fees for the water. Next slide. Proposed rate adjustment for the fiscal year 2021 would be water rates at a 7.5% increase, sewer rates at a 2.5% increase. The base charge has no change, and the fees for the department have no change. This is a total combined rate adjustment of about 4%. Next slide. Recommended fiscal year 2021 water volumetric rates. So we talked about a 5.7% overall volumetric water rate adjustment. We did continue the residential discount tier, and water rates continue to be less than one penny per gallon. So over on the right, near the bottom, it's one billing unit equals 100 cubic feet, which deliver to your home is 748 gallons. On the discount rate is $4.20 for 748 gallons to your home. For the tier one, it is $4.68 for that same 748 gallons. Tier two, $6.74 for the 748 gallons. Tier three, $7.06, and tier four, $7.34. And again, all still under one penny a gallon delivered to your home. Next slide. Recommended FY21 sewer volumetric rates would be a 2.5% overall volumetric sewer rate increase. Again, the residential discount tier. And sewer rates support both sanitary and stormwater infrastructure. So we have a really large system for both water and sewer that have to be maintained. We do take the sewage away from your home and all the water in the streets. And one billing unit again equals 100 cubic feet. So for a 748 gallons of waste that is taken from your home, it's a little over a penny at $7.98. Tier one, $8.87. Tier two, $11.32. Tier three, $11.87, and tier four, $12.29. So it is a higher rate than the water, but it does cost more to treat it through the MWRA and Deer Island. Next slide. So what does it mean for an average bill? So average annual combined bills, including base charge. For example, on the FY20, which is this year, a condominium unit is paying $742 annually. That will be a $24 increase, which would be $766. And with that, it would be an average of, I'm so sorry if I didn't catch up. It's about an average of $8 per billing cycle to, for the water rate increases that we're proposing. On a single-family home, it's today annual at $950 a year. That'll increase $33, so it'll be $983 per year, which would be about an $11 bill increase. Keeping in mind that we bill tri-annually, every three months, sorry, every four months, which would be three times a year. Double-decker, which is a two-family home, today on average pays $1,556. It would increase $59 to $1,615, which is a $29 per household or per floor increase. And on a triple-decker, a three-family, today's average is $2,162, which would go up $85. And that's $2,247, which is about a $28 per floor or per family increase. Next slide. We also offer some financial assistance resources available to residents. We have an ongoing policy of no water shut-off, so no non-payments, so not to worry. There is an exemption for seniors and others with the clause of 17D41C. And the information for those can be found on the Assessors' Office page on the city's website. And the ability to set up water usage limits via Aquahawk on our leak alert system. At this time, I'll turn it over to Alex Lessin, and he's going to talk a little bit about the Aquahawk system that we have available to customers.
Thank you, Director DeLuca. My name is Alex Maria Lessin. I'm the Director of Finance and Administration for the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds. I did want to just take a moment to pitch our Aquahawk leak alert system. Our leak alert system is a courtesy that we provide to rate payers so that you can monitor your usage from your computer. One feature of our leak alert system is if we have your phone number on file, and that's an accurate phone number, if the system detects an abnormal usage amount of water, then you would receive an automated phone call, alerting you to that fact. There's also an option for text message or email. But what I wanted to stress tonight is how important it is that we have your correct phone number. Even though we can't guarantee that we'll catch any extra water usage, there's no chance we'll be able to do it if we don't have your correct contact information. So take a moment, log in to our Aquahawk system. It's soma.Aquahawk, like water and a bird.us，请登录 You can also find that link on our website, somervillema.gov/water. And make sure your information is up to date. And sure, great.
No? Did you have some more?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to let folks know, our automated meter system, our smart meter system, it reads your meter once a day. So while it would be excellent for us to have a read every hour, and we're working towards that with a meter replacement program that we hope to roll out soon. Currently, we only receive one read per day. And so you might look on the website and see, see your usage, and what you'll find is a read that is accurate about every 24 hours. I just wanted to make sure folks knew that.
Thank you, Mr. Lessin. Appreciate that. Next slide. So we will start the public hearing promptly at 6:30. And again, just if you could write your name and your address into the chat box, and we will take everybody in order. It is currently 6:20. We could open up if there are any questions. We have 10 minutes. If anybody has any questions, we can turn everybody's microphone on. Alex, can you do that?
I should be able to. Let me check these. So yes, I'm able to turn on person's microphone. If you do have a question, then let's, you know, if you could just put, put something in the chat, either a question, I have a question, or even though, then I'm happy to unmute your microphone and give you the floor. And otherwise, we will just keep this screen up to let folks know how they can testify at 6:30.
If we can, I do want to thank everybody for your continued support for the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds. It is a critical infrastructure that's needed. We have many great men and women that work for the department, and they really, really strive to do an outstanding job every day. So again, I do appreciate everyone's continued support. And if there's any way we can help with any reason that you have, please don't hesitate to call us on 311, and we'll be happy to send someone out and solve any issue you may have. Well, seeing no questions at the moment, we will wait till 6:30. We will open up for public testimony at that time.
I'll turn my camera off, but if folks do have a question in the meantime, certainly just drop a letter in the chat, and I will turn my camera right back on and unmute you as soon as possible. Thank you. Director, I do see a question from Alberto Gilman, and would love to read it to you if you can hear me.
Yes, please.
Okay, let me read it to you. So the question is, "Good evening. I believe you had touched on this, but there was a mention of hourly readings. Has there been concern due to the pandemic, or has this been a regular discussion topic?" If you don't mind, Alberto, I'm going to unmute you. You can hear me. Ask you to clarify exactly. Are you asking, are the lack of hourly readings a concern? And given, given the COVID-19 pandemic, is that your question?
Mr. Gilman, if you could hear us. So he may be having some audio trouble. So, Mr. Gilman, the system we've always had has been a 24-hour read system. So it's, it is something we're looking into to upgrade our water meter system and our water reading system. We haven't currently at the moment, we're still in the process of researching for the type of system that would best suit the city. So we hope to get something that would be reading new technology today. When we did put this in many years ago, this was the latest technology. But they do have new technology that'll read, I believe, every hour. Is that correct, Mr. Lessin?
Or even 15 minutes, and I mean, if I could just add
Every 15 minutes.
One piece, I mean, I'm speaking specifically about, you know, I think what I'm asking is, look, if we don't know if someone's water is off, especially now during the pandemic, you know, does that cause, cause a problem? I mean, I think once we have the hourly read, we would be able to address things more quickly. But a couple of things, I mean, water's off, we would expect to hear from the constituent right away, and it's why it's so important that we have a 3-1-1 system in the city. When, if a call comes in that water's been shut off, that gets routed to us right away, and we're able to dispatch an operator to try to check what might be happening. You know, in this context, you know, when I'm, what Aquahawk is much better at is trying to track when water usage is too high, maybe because there's a broken pipe in the home or just a leaky toilet. But if someone is having a water issue, as long as they call 3-1-1, we'll be able to address that right away.
I hope that answers your question, sir. We are currently at 6:26, and approximately four minutes will open up for testimony. If there are any other questions we can squeeze in in the next four minutes, please put something in the chat box. And also, if you would like to testify on behalf of the water and sewer rate, please go ahead and add your name into the chat box and label it testimony. We'll be happy to turn your mic on at that time. All right, I now have 6:30. I'd like to open the public hearing for anyone that would like to testify. Again, we would like to take testimony as to the water and sewer rates, for or against, any of your thoughts. Please put something in the chat box if you'd like to testify. We can turn on your microphone. We'll just give people a few minutes if they'd like to gather their thoughts. All right, seeing no testimony at the moment. We do want to keep the hearing open for written testimony.
Director.
Yes, sir.
There is, there was, excuse me, a question which I will translate into testimony from Counselor Scott. Counselor, if you could state your name and address for the record, and I will figure out how to unmute you.
All right. Thank you, Director Lessin and Director DeLuca. Counselor J.T. Scott, Ward 2, at 269 Washington Street. I'm calling this night's public hearing because I received multiple phone calls from elderly residents today who either did not have a computer or did not have confidence that they'd be able to figure out how to attend the hearing. Universally, their concern was both about the impact on, on their fixed income and also on the income, on the impact on their tenants. I received calls from three elderly residents of Beacon Street who spoke at great length about their concerns, especially regarding the timing of this water and sewer rate increase during the middle of a global pandemic, which has, which has their, in the case of people who had tenants, has their tenants unable to work right now and in a place where they weren't putting rent on them. So their concern was that, while they understood that certain increase has to happen over time, that they felt this timing of an increase was bewildering and were concerned about its impact for the ones who do not have tenants on their fixed income. I told them that I would bring that testimony here, as well as, of course, forwarded them all the information in case they were able to manage to attend. I understand this, this isn't the time for questions, but just if, if at the conclusion of the hearing this evening, if you would let people know what email addresses or phone numbers they can call to submit, to submit testimony, especially a phone number for people who may not have computers. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Lessin, do we have anybody else?
Checking.
No one else wishing to testify?
Not yet, no. I'm looking at both the question and chat pane, just to folks, it's easier to use the question pane. Happy to do that.
Okay. Okay. All right, seeing, seeing no one else that would like to testify, I will close this portion of the public hearing. But the, there will be a portion that will remain open for written testimony until June 16th at 6 o'clock. And if they could please send any testimony that they would like to give to my attention, John DeLuca, Director of Water and Sewer, at water@somervillema.gov. Email water@somervillema.gov. Or if you would like to write a comment directly to me, it would be, again, John DeLuca, Director of Water and Sewer. And they can mail that to 17 Franny Road, Somerville, Mass. 02145. I want to thank everybody for their time tonight in allowing us to present the water and sewer rate adjustment for FY21. And I will end this portion of the hearing, and we can take any questions anybody may have. Again, if you do have a question, you can just put a note in the chat window with your name and your address. And let us know you have a question. We can turn your microphone on.
And for the record, thank you, Counselor Scott, for the information. The chat function is not available to attendees. So if you do have a question or you'd like to testify, please put it in the question pane. I've also been monitoring that the entire time, but just in case if folks have had trouble, then please go ahead and do that. Put a question or anything in the question pane, and I will unmute my microphone. Let me also attendees.
All right, seeing no questions. Once again, I'd like to thank everybody for attending tonight. And I would like to just mention again that we will accept written testimony until October, excuse me, June, Tuesday, June 16th at 6:00 PM. You can send our email correspondence to me, johndeLuca, Director of Water and Sewer, at water@somervillema.gov. Or if you'd like to write a letter, and it would be, again, John DeLuca, Director of Water and Sewer, at 17 Franny Road, Somerville, Mass. 02145.
And I want to add, I think, folks, folks can call our office number. While we might not, we most certainly won't be able to pick up right away. Folks, call 617-625-6600. And just ask for the Water Department. That is another absolutely viable way to leave testimony. We'll make sure to record that and add it to the file.
Absolutely. All right, that'll conclude tonight's public hearing and presentation. Once again, on behalf of the department, we appreciate your support and thank you for attending.
Thank you.